Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April twenty-sixth edition of the East Bethel City Council meeting. Is there a motion on tonight's agenda?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mondo.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. First item is the Sheriff's Department report. Good evening, Shelley.
Good evening. Hope you're all doing well on this not-so-spring-like day. I don't know what happened to the sixty-seven degrees we were supposed to have, but didn't come close, I don't think. But anyway, here's your report for March. DWI, there were three DWI arrests in March. Two of the arrests were reported as co-intoxicated drivers who failed field sobriety upon being stopped. The third arrest was a result of a deputy witnessing driving conduct that indicated impairment while on routine patrol. Two of the drivers had blood alcohol levels that were well over two times the legal limit. One driver had a blood alcohol content of point-three-zero. That was an arrest at nine-oh-eight PM. And the second driver had a blood alcohol content of point-two-five, and that was an arrest at ten-eighteen PM. So they were pretty well intoxicated. Scam. Deputy Adrian was dispatched fraud report. The complainant advised that she had received an email yesterday telling her she needed to pay seven-hundred dollars for her McAfee internet security. The complainant called the number provided and told them she shouldn't have to pay for anything as she had just purchased the laptop and the software was free for the first year. She was advised that the company would refund her the seven-hundred dollars. She then was told that the company had refunded her too much, so she should send nineteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars via FedEx to a male in Manchester, New Hampshire. The complainant realized that this was a scam and sent blank envelopes. She requested a tracking number and that the person who picks it up needs to show identification. The complainant stated she did contact her bank to have her accounts changed due to having given information to the scammers. She had not had any money taken from her account, though, so she was lucky there that she didn't fall victim. Damage to property. Deputy Adrian was dispatched to a business on a vandalism report. Upon arriving, Deputy Adrian was advised that a male in a black SUV had broken the victim's rear window on her vehicle and went into the driver's compartment. The victim had been at work and heard a vehicle alarm go off. The victim reported she looked out a window and saw a male running away from her vehicle. The victim stated she did not have anything of value in her vehicle aside from some loose change in the cup holder. The business did have outside surveill- surveillance, so images of the suspect were able to be obtained. There was not a front license plate on the vehicle, and the rear plate was not visible. The male was wearing a black tie with a white shirt, black pants, and red shoes. The following day, Deputy Adrian received information that the suspect in this incident had been arrested by Blaine PD on a shoplifting charge the day before. The male was wearing the same clothing and red shoes when arrested in Blaine. The suspect was issued a citation for damage to property. Possession of fifth-degree controlled substance possesses over one-point-four grams of marijuana in a motor vehicle. Deputy O'Connor stopped a motor vehicle for the registered owner showing a revoked driver's license. Deputy O'Connor immediately smelled the odor of marijuana upon making contact with the male suspect. The male suspect was identified as registered owner of the vehicle. The male had an e-cigarette and a THC cartridge on him. There was a search completed of the vehicle which revealed seventy grams of marijuana, twenty-six THC cartridges, and a four-ounce bottle of THC syrup. The suspect was taken into custody and transported to jail. Suspicious activity. Deputy Mobot- Mobrotten received a call from a complainant who said a male came to her door with flowers telling her he needed payment. The suspect would not tell her who the flowers were from. The complainant knew this to be a scam from social media and refused to pay. The suspect vehicle was described as a white passenger car, unknown make or license. Deputy Mobrotten checked the area but did not locate the vehicle. And suspicious activity. Deputy Feld was dispatched to a parking lot where a group of juveniles were vandalizing a vehicle. Upon arrival, Deputy Feld identified the owner of the vehicle, who advised he was junking it the next day, and they were just damaging it for fun. No charges, as there was not a crime committed, but they were advised to conduct these activities in a private location and not in everyone's view. And that is my report for the month.
Thanks. Any questions from council?
Shelley, how much is seventy grams of marijuana?
How much?
Yeah, just put it, is it?
I'd say like this. Like a freezer Ziploc bag, like half-full.
So like a gallon? Like a gal- like a gallon freezer bag, half-full?
Yep, yep.
That's a, that's a decent amount.
Yeah, um, yeah, marijuana, you can have a fair amount of that, and it's not considered a felony-level crime because it's marijuana, because it's THC. I mean, if you get, if you have, you know, trash bags full of it, then yes, you'd be level, but marijuana, because it's, it's a lower-level drug than, say, if you had methamphetamine, that amount of methamphetamine or heroin or something of that nature. But the, the thing that does make it a felony is the THC syrup.
Oh, just a four-ounce bottle of that, or just possession of the syrup itself?
Well, the, the THC cartridges and the THC syrup make it, make it a felony. Because that's more, it's, it's a higher, there's a higher level of the drug potency in that.
And so the cartridges, you, I'm guessing you put them in the e-cigarette things?
Yep.
And so you can, like, vape them?
Yes.
And then the, how do you use the THC syrup?
I'm not sure how you use the THC syrup. I will have to get back to you with an answer from that.
Do you put it on your pancakes, or?
I don't think so, but maybe I, you might mix it into something. I don't. It's, you know, this is all kind of new drugs from the days when I was back working the roads, so you know, this THC stuff. I mean, we had marijuana, but we didn't have these cartridge, you know, there was no e-vaping, and there was no syrups out there. You know, the drugs were just normal. So, you know, nowadays, the THC cartridges, you go to states where marijuana is legalized, and that's where you can get these.
Okay.
You bring it back to Minnesota or any other state where it's not legal, and it's illegal.
Yep. Well, okay, interesting.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll fi- I'll find out about what you do with that syrup, because I'm not really sure. If you, like, put regular marijuana and then sm- you know, let it dry and smoke, I don't know.
Yeah.
Not sure.
Well, considering back when the days were half, your reports are always about meth. Th- this is a little, not quite as concerning, I guess, so.
Yeah, not quite to the level.
Yeah. Any other questions for Commander Orlando tonight? All right, Shelley, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Oh, no, it's Chief Desharm with their fire department report. Well, chief.
Good evening, council mayor. So this is the report for March two thousand twenty-one. At the end of March, we had answered one-hundred-and-eighty-eight calls for service. In March alone, we answered sixty calls, six old calls. Forty of those were medicals. We had a couple of car crashes, three smoke alarms and a CO alarm, nine burning unauthorized burning calls. We had four fires, a couple of grass fires, and a couple of mutilated fires that we helped out on. So, year-to-date, we're running about seventy-three percent of our calls are still running at for medicals, and the, the rest of the categories are eight percent or less. So our medicals, you know, continue to grow. There's one issue in the March report, once again, dealing with unauthorized burning calls. Just want to remind council, and I want to remind the public and our residents, that we're under a burning restriction right now by the DNR. And although it rained a half-inch today, remember that green stuff has to get as high as the brown stuff before they're going to relax the burning restrictions. So we're not offering burning permits right now. However, you can have recreational fires. And as I've said before, mayor and council, the recreation fires are three feet by three feet. And you're not supposed to be burning your yard waste or construction debris. And many of those calls this past month, that's what it was. So, compared to two thousand twenty, we're, we're about twenty-nine calls. Anywhere from twenty-five to twenty-nine calls ahead of the pace of last year. And of course, last year was a record year for calls. Any questions?
Any questions for chief tonight?
Chief, how are we doing for staffing for firefighters?
We're Yeah, we're holding at thirty-five. However, our calls per firefighter, let me, let me redo that. Firefighters per call average have been slipping a little bit, where we had been in the seven-to-nine firefighter ratio per call, we're now somewhere around five to six. So we're watching that pretty closely, talking to, you know, firefighters and making sure that, you know, that they're coming to as many calls as they can during their time period.
So are, so everything looking properly staffed, or with the increase in calls, is it starting to overwhelm, or?
We're, you, you know, it's an interesting point, and a really good question. Because with the number of calls that we're, we've been going on, at times, it can be overwhelming. And, you know, depending on the severity of the call as it comes out, you know, we have to be careful that, you know, we're coming to, coming to all of them, so. You know, as, as of, you know, right now, you know, we're not pushing a panic button. We're just, I'm, I'm keeping track of it, looking at the trend lines, and actually talking with other chiefs in, in the area who are seeing the, the same trend lines.
So if somebody were to apply, would you still have room for them?
There we have, we're holding a couple of applications. We don't like to interview applicants until we're sure. We've got a fire recruit class coming up, and we'll have one coming up, sounds like early summer. So those applicants will be taking a look at and interviewing them. And any resident out there who is interested, and now would be a good time to get your application in. All you have to do is just go to the city hall or contact the city hall, and we'll email you a, an application.
Great. Oh, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions for chief tonight? All right, seeing none. Mark, thank you very much for being here. Thank you. And we'll, we'll move on. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Your motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. I like the whole item G and H. G is
I'd like to pull E as an elephant.
And I'd like to pull item A.
And zero second to the motion.
I seconded it twice.
Sorry, Suzanne, I missed that.
No, I know, it's okay.
Any, any other discussion? All right, to the motion. Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mondo.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. Suzanne, item A.
Item A is the bills list, and I just, I'm asking, wanting to know exactly what we paid for, for the tax increment districts, those three that are going to Eler, is that who it was? Eller, Eler.
That's, Eller's, that's their financial advisor.
Oh, oh, okay.
The, the, those bills are for the review of qualifications for tax increment. Two and three, which is the Viking Reserve Project and the East Bethel Village Apartments, they have to send in their numbers so that those income qualifications of that twenty percent are met. So Eller's reviews those and either certifies or certifies the percentage that qualifies, and that applies to the TIF increment they're eligible to receive.
Okay, perfect. I just didn't know how it all worked. Thank you, Jack. I understand now.
Is there a motion on item A for the consent agenda?
I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda. Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mondo.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. Brian, you asked to pull item E.
Oh, item E is resol- resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fourteen concerning Whispering Aspen. I wanted to pull it so I could abstain from voting on it.
Okay. Is there a motion on this item tonight? Then I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fourteen. Whispering Aspen, second plat- trying to make sure I get the right title here.
Second.
The resolution approving the final plat of Whispering Aspen, second edition. Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Nay. Sticking with my consi- regular original vote.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Council, Mayor Voss.
Aye. Brian abstained, so that motion does pass. Tim, item G.
Item G, I'd like to congratulate Alicia Apone for getting through her probation period. I just want to say thanks for volunteering for the fire department. And with that, I'll prove item G as written.
A second.
Motion made in second. So welcome, welcome any new firefighters, so it's good.
Vote?
Yes, Chris, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mondo.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. Tim, item H.
Item H, I received an email this afternoon that this charitable organization, I don't know if there's some issues with it. Jack, do you, do you know anything about this?
Uh, I received the same email, and the email stated that this group, Invisible Wounds Inc., may not be registered with the Minnesota Attorney General's Office. They did submit an application. They submitted everything that we required, including a letter from the Minnesota Department of Treasury that identified them as a five-oh-one-C-three corporation and also classified them as a public charity. So if there are some issues outstanding out there as to their exact legal classification, it's probably going to be up to the Minnesota Alcohol and Gambling Control Board to rule on. Our, our role in this tonight is to certify that their application is consistent with city codes. Minnesota Alcohol and Gambling Control Board has the ultimate authority and approval, and they will check this to see what their exact charitable status is. So I would recommend that we approve this and then it's sent to the Minnesota Alcohol and Gambling Control Board, and they hold the ultimate approval on this item.
So.
I'll make a motion to approve item H as written.
A second.
Motion made in second. Discussion.
So, the, this group fulfills everything that we have listed in our application. There'd be no reason to deny.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and again, and again, our approval is more in relation to our city codes. There are certain things that the Alcohol Control Board has to determine, and they'll make that determination once we submit it to them.
Yes, but as far as all, all of our conditions as to what we are responsible for, they fulfill.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then, and also, Jack, it's not really our role to make that determination. It's the state's role.
That's correct.
Okay. And then I got one last question for Mr. Nelson. Is the motion formal enough for this? Because there's a resolution that's in our packet. You're on mute, Chris.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. The resolution should be adopted via the motion, so that if the, if there's no objection to the withdrawal of the motion, the motion should be remade to adopt the resolution.
Tim, can you remake the motion and cite the resolution?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, motion to approve item H, Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-five, approving application for paddle wheel raffle permit for Invisible Wounds Project.
Aye, second.
Make, motion made in second. Any further discussion? Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mondo.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that, that motion passes. There's no new business tonight. So we're on to department reports, community development. And see, Stephanie's with us tonight.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so this was just the Elevage First Edition Development Agreement. It's on April twelfth of this year, this last meeting, city council approved the plat known as the Elevage First Edition. The city staff, the city attorney, and the developers attorney have been working together to prepare the draft of the developers agreement for review and approval. So this specific development agreement is for, just for the first edition. The master plan P U D agreement will be placed on the May tenth city council agenda. So at this time, it's recommended city council review and consider approval of the developers agreement for Elevage First Edition. And then we have, Mike is on the phone. He's the developer's city attorney, and first of all, for active in it, and also Craig. So if you have questions, hopefully one of us can answer the question.
Hey. Is there a motion on approval of the agreement tonight?
I'll make a motion for approval of the developers agreement for Elevage First Edition.
A second.
Motion made in second. This, question.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, go ahead, Councilmember Mondo.
No, you go ahead. I'll follow.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just want to note a couple items on the development agreement before you, and I will note that prior to the meeting, I, I did have a conversation with the attorney for the developer and informed him I would be commenting on a couple of these items. We, we have gone back and forth on this a little bit, and the, the produced draft is, is what you see in, in front of you tonight. The most recent draft incorporates developers council's recent comments. I have not had the opportunity to substantively discuss all of these with him yet. However, I did want to draw the city's attention to two items here. The first is related to the, on page fifteen, section eleven-point-two. And as developers council probably addresses well, generally speaking, it's unusual for the city to be making an indemnification in a development agreement. However, this is a somewhat unusual development agreement in the sense that the city is, you know, producing the roads here and installing public improvements and utilities is, is part of this. You know, that being said, it is unusual for a city to, to indemnify as part of a development agreement. I, I review this language the, this afternoon, when the, the final draft was circulated, indicates that this is somewhat broad. To my mind, this is a multi-phased development agreement, and the city improvements will be a part of each of those development agreements, so I think some limiting language at least would be appropriate on the indemnification clause here for the city to consider.
Mr. Nelson, would you, are you saying you'd like more time to review this and say, bring it back to us at the next council meeting?
I, I certainly wouldn't object to more time. I know it's related. We have a master P U D as well that, that or development agreement that needs to be approved, but I also want to give Mr., well, the developers council an opportunity to address this as well.
All right, Jack, if we postpone approving this, does it hold anything up on either the city or developers end?
I think it's somewhat of a time-sensitive issue, but I'll let Mr. Bergen's comment on that from the developer's standpoint.
Okay, can, can we clarify something first? In our packet, we have a red line version of the developers agreement. And then, and then a clean version was sent out later this afternoon. Whose changes are these red lines? Chris, is, is this the city's changes?
I, I believe the most recent version you'd have in the packet would be the developers' proposed changes. Correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie.
That is correct, yeah. I didn't realize that.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
I just, I didn't realize that the red line version was in the packet rather than the clean version. So yeah, it's just the developers' petition.
Yeah, I mean, the red line version is what we will watch in our packet. We need to see those changes. So, so these are developers' changes, and Chris, have you had a chance to review any of these changes yet?
I've had a chance to review most of, well, I've had a chance to review the changes, Mr. Mayor. I just haven't had a chance to talk with the developer, developers council about that yet. I understand there was a conversation with staff today. I was not a part of the conversation. It's not because I was excluded from the conversation. I was in trial today and unable to participate, so.
Okay. I've got two questions that are related to the red line changes. On the, first is, on the liability coverages. I noticed that the liability coverage is lowered from five million down to three million. And so I just wanted to highlight that. I'm not sure how I mean, five-million-dollar policy is pretty common, but I don't, I just ask a reason why that was lowered. And then, secondly, and, you know, maybe a little more problematic, one, one of the additions, if I can find the page here. Sorry. On page fifty-three of our packet, it talks about unavoidable delays. And I'm sure this is something that's gonna come up in future contracts. And I'm sure this is something that's gonna come up in future contracts because everything that's happening. Uh, the word pandemics was added as unavoidable delay. And so my question related to that word, man, I think we understand why that in there now. But who defines what a pandemic is? And you know, I, it, it seems pretty broad, um, particularly when, you know, there's a certain percentage of our population doesn't even believe this is a pandemic. So I, you know, it, it's not a common knowledge thing. To me, it's gotta be defined somewhere. So, but those are just comments I want to bring out, long as you're gonna be reviewing them.
So I do have a, a couple of questions. On a four point eight water system, and it was probably reflected in the four point nine sanitary system. Uh, each building constructed, phase one property shall be served by a water main and a lateral that connected to the city's water in accordance. Um, so is the lateral, when, when referring to the water main, is that the main water main in the street? And would the lateral be the same thing as a curb stop that's placed on the property?
Yeah, council member Mundle, that is correct. And we're saying water main. We're talking about the main in the street, basically running parallel with the center line. And then the laterals would be stubbed to their actual lot.
Okay.
And just to note, all that's being basically constructed with the service road project.
Okay, so they, um, they would not be, they would not have to tap a, a water main.
Correct.
To connect the water. Okay, that's what I thought kind of said, but I wanted to clarify it.
I, I think there's some language in there to cover if they've agreed to these connection points and sizes. I don't know, let's say, a year from now, something else goes in there and that size does not work. Those costs would all be on them to revise that lateral.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that lateral is the same thing as a curb stop and each time you connect you're not having to tap a main. Um, and there was.
And I think as, as part of, uh, this individual development agreement, it would just be one time, uh, correct. It's only for the, uh, convenience store, so.
Yeah, it only covers the one. Um, on nine point five, dual approval. City represents to the developer that the master P U D plan, preliminary plan, final plat, phase one project, phase one construction plans in this agreement have been duly approved by the city. In accordance with its ordinances and applicable statutes, that I'm looking for clarification on it. Um, that's just saying, when these items are approved, that they have been approved in accordance with ordinance and applicable statuses. It does, uh, as opposed to having this in here would not commit the city to approving any one of these items. It's just saying that these items have been approved in accordance with ordinances and statutes. Would that be correct?
With, with that, um, the master P U D plan, the preliminary plat and the final plat, uh, have been approved by the council. Um, I don't think, um, any other item, uh, has been approved, um, as of today's date. Um, regarding that, and, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I don't think any of the others have, have been approved.
But wha- but whether the city has approved them or not, would this, with this clause in here saying that if and when they are approved, if, if the city has approved them, they've been approved in accordance with its ordinances and applicable state statutes. And not saying that the city has approved these things without. Uh, do you guys, am I explaining it correctly?
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe, uh, uh, man, and council members, is, is council member's Mundle question is the city's obligated to approve these documents now that it's, it states it in the agreement. And I don't think the city would be, you know, o- obligated to approve the agreement. I will just say the agreement states that it, they have been approved. Um, which would, you know, not be, um, and, and the city engineer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the, uh, construction plans have been approved at this point, so.
It, it would just be that when they are approved, it's stating it's in accordance with ordinances and statutes.
Correct.
Not that we have approved them or have any obligation to approve them. Okay. I think those are my questions.
I have a quick question on a striking of the quick, the word quick trip. Does that mean it's definitely not coming or they haven't picked a company yet?
I'm happy to jump in and answer all the questions if it's, uh, if it's my turn.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, good, good evening, um, mayor and council members. Um, I'm Michael Mergans. I am the, um, developers council. Um, I'll start with the last question first. Um, no, we just don't want quick tricks, na- quick trips name in a publicly recorded document. Um, it, it is still them, um, that, uh, and, um, a- as, uh, Jack pointed out, there's sometimes time sensitivity here. Um, we would really like to be breaking ground in two gra- i- in two weeks. Um, not waiting for, for this, um, particular agreement to be approved in two weeks. Um, so we, we have a really strong preference to, to have a decision tonight. And, and I, I will address some of the comments that you had in, in, um, the document and kind of start at the top, mayor, you had raised the issue about, um, pandemic, um, word that was added, and it is certainly something that based on uh, COVID and what it has meant for abilities to perform a contract, um, we, we do add it a lot. And, and, um, sort of everything in, in unavoidable, uh, delay, there are a number of things. What, what is an act of God? Um, so there are certainly things that, that sometimes get litigated. No matter how much you try to define what the word is, um, if that creates a lot of heartburn, we, we do have in the language about, um, uh, a state of emergency. So i- if you would prefer that the word pandemic is out, I, that, that, um, is not an issue. To me, I think, um, it is standard to have it added, um, but we can go with just the, the state of emergency. Language as well.
Yeah, I thi- I think my, my concern with it, um, w- one is sort of fresh, right? Illegal sense, you know, of what's going on. But I think more importantly is, is how, how do you, how do you, uh, quantitate that? Or how, how do you, how do you decide that a certain delay on construction was due to the pandemic? I mean, I think it's pretty easy right now just to say there's a delay. Well, it's COVID. Um, you know, whether it's supply chain, or whether it's delivery, whether it's manufacturing, whatever the reason being. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm just a little concerned of the fact that it's too easy of, of, of a, of, of a reason to use. Um, without being, you know, a little better defined. I think your, your, your comment about being, you know, under emergency action, I think that, that, that helps define it still. But I just wanted to bring it up and, you know, our council hasn't had a chance to comment or consider that yet either. So, um, um, so that does, you know, go ahead with your responses. I, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So I think really what that, um, that brings us down to is, is the, the change in the indemnification language. And so, um, a, a big part of the changes that, that I made throughout this agreement date back to the, to the M O U and, and the decision of, of this developer, um, to donate the land. Um, so that the public improvements could be installed and the city would construct the, the public improvements at its cost. And, you know, I, I, I think the big thing to keep in mind is from, from our side, this, this really is a, is a public private partnership. Um, and, and we're very appreciative of, of the city and, and its partnerships here. And, and I think that we've had a good working relationship throughout this. Staff has been, um, fantastic to work, uh, work with. Um, uh, Chris has been great to work with as well. And I, I, I do acknowledge that we had a call to try and discuss through, um, this particular language, uh, right before this call. Um, and so we do really appreciate it and, and we think that it's been a, a great relationship. The language was added, um, um, to deal specifically with, this is a little bit of an abnormal development agreement. Where the city is going to be, um, doing work, including work that would cross on to, um, the phase one property. The, the laterals that we just talked about as an example. And so, um, what we looked at and said, well, uh, in a partnership, the both partners should sort of be dancing to the same tune. And, and so if you look at it, um, eleven point two is the indemnification that the developer provides to the city for anything that comes out of a result of the negligence of the developer. And so the language tracks the exact same, uh, within that sentence, just reversed. And so what we're asking for is that, um, the city to provide the same to the developer for the work it does. That the developer provides to the city for the work that the developer does. And that was, uh, um, ultimately the driving force is that, um, you know, we have been good working partners. And, and, uh, we are both doing some work. And so, um, if either one of us is negligent in the work that we do, then the person who was negligent should pay the bill for it, not the partner that didn't do the work. And so that's, um, that's really the, the driving force behind it and, and why, um, why I think, uh, the, the language should be there and why I think, um, it is fair under the circumstances of this particular development that, that it is there.
Okay, Cr- Chris, do you have any comments on the fact that we're trying to get this through tonight? What desire, desire to get through tonight?
I have no, I have no comments on, on the desire to, to get it through tonight. Um, you know, other than, you know, Mayor noting, um, and just being clear with the council that I, I haven't had the opportunity other than a, a, a very short phone call prior to the, to the meeting to talk about this with Mr. Mergans. Um, and I wanted the council to be aware of it. The, the agreement does state that it was, um, you know, drafted by me. And, uh, I haven't had an opportunity to discuss, uh, the, the proposed amendments from the developer with the developer. That being said, um, I really don't have objections to the majority of these, um, amendments, um, that are, that are present. Um, I, you know, probably propose that the council add a provision to, uh, and this is page eleven. Section six point one, I, I doubt this would be objectionable to the developer. Um, but stating that the, um, letter of, the form of the letter of credit shall be approved by the city attorney, which is, uh, generally a, a provision we include on, on letter of credits. Um, but the, the real substantive comments, um, you know, would really relate to, to two items. Um, I, I noticed there's a deletion on page five of the city issuing a notice that all conditions precedent are satisfied and the developer may proceed. I really don't know why that's being proposed to be deleted. That's the city would just issue a notice to developer that they can proceed. Um, but the, um, eh, the lateral, the sanitary sewer system, I talked about this with the city engineer. The, the language doesn't appear, um, you know, concerning. And as, as everyone's pointed out, those improvements are being installed by the city. Um, really, the only thing I wanted to, to point out was the fact that it, it, it is unusual for the city to be indemnifying based on roads that they're producing or utilities that they're, they're putting in. Um, I'll grant that it's not a common development agreement and generally the developer installs all improvements. And the warranty or indemnification would only flow one direction. Uh, one of the concerns that I expressed to Mr. Mergans is that, uh, this is not necessarily limited by its language to, um, to this phase of the development. It's this sort of a general indemnification of anything related to the phase one public improvements. I wouldn't expect phase one public improvements to be defined in any subsequent development agreement. So if something were to happen in phase five, for example, uh, I see no limiting provision saying that this wouldn't be invoked as, as part of that. And that could be, you know, sort of years after the fact. Um, and, and that was one of the, the concerns that I, I pointed out with this, this provision, so.
And just to, uh,
Chris, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, thank you. Um, so just to a- address, I would agree with, uh, with Mr. Nelson on, on section six point one. Um, I, I, we're fine with the addition of that language. Um, the deletion of the notice, um, if you've issued a demo permit, um, that seems like that's notice that we, we can proceed. And, and you've already approved it. If you really want to send us notice, um, that, that's fine. It just seemed like, um, issuing of the permits is, is sufficient notice to proceed. And then the mayor, I think you had asked about, um, insurance policy amounts. And the reason I, I reduced it is, is three million is, um, a little more standard in the industry. There's just not a lot of work within phase one, um, that the developer is doing, right? We're demolishing, uh, the space and we're doing some, uh, um, grading. There's just not a lot of, um, work here to create liability. So that's, that's why those, um, numbers were moved down.
Chris, is it, uh, safe to assume that you would prefer this be tabled so you have a chance to thoroughly review and make a recommendation to council?
But I, um, uh, ma- mayor, that would obviously be my preference. Uh, that being said, I, I understand, uh, the position of, of the developer on this. I, I don't know, I, you know, I hate to propose this, but I don't know if this is, this is, uh, you know, something that could be addressed, um, in the interim. Um, I, I know that, uh, it's an imposition on everyone's schedule, but, uh, that remains a possibility. But, um, um, you know, I, I, I don't think this agreement's far off. I just, I really haven't had an opportunity to discuss it with Mr. Mergans and, and talk about these, these latest, uh, proposed, uh, amendments, so.
Mr. Mayor, um, we have a work meeting next Monday already scheduled. Would we be able to call a special session net before the next work meeting? Who will address this?
Yeah, we, we'll, we can if it's ready, so.
So would one week be long enough, Mr. Nelson?
I can't imagine it wouldn't be. It, it, you know, could be ready in, uh, a couple of days. And, uh, uh, again, this is, um, you know, ju- just something that hasn't been discussed. And I very much hesitate to recommend to the council to, to take action without that discussion taking place.
Yeah, uh, uh, yeah, I would like to see things go forward on a timely basis as well. But we have to make sure that every I is crossed and T is dotted, so.
Exactly. Um, is, so, Mr. Nelson, did you say this is not this part of this contract that we're doing is for the whole development or it's just for a phase, this particular phase?
This is, uh, council member Urkel and, and council members, this is for phase one. And this is development for phase one. The council will, uh, pass multiple other development agreements, including a master development agreement, which will be on the council's schedule at its next regular meeting. Uh, in, in that governs, lays out some overarching principles for the development of the entire P U D. The phase two, phase three, phase four, those will all be subsequent, uh, agreements. Um, the city's involvement in, in this P U D is really related to phase one. Um, it's constructing its, its public improvements as part of phase one. So with regard to the city's position, this is, this is sort of the, the, the agreement and, and likely the only agreement where we're going to have affirmative obligations, so.
Jack, you had something to add earlier?
No, I, I just wanted to question about the time sensitivity of this. And, uh, Brian has already offered a good alternative, which we could address this at a special meeting. Next Monday, does that fit in with your schedule, Mike?
So I, I, I think, um, uh, we can get that to work. Um, uh, you know, typically we would, uh, on, on these types of meetings, we would have a, a final, uh, document. And, and Corey would have signed, uh, the originals and we would have provided it to you to sign. So, um, we could get a document signed before next Friday and get. So um we could get a document signed before next Friday and get Corey signed on it. And then um I I I would just uh ask whether we could keep everything moving if it was approved on Monday. To get the city's signature on it on Monday as well, so that we're we're done um a week from today. And and we can get the contractors going the week after that.
And uh and and just for the developers' uh benefits and the council's benefits, uh there is, that's that's certainly going to happen. There's there's no no reason why that timeline couldn't be couldn't be met. It will be met, um and we can have that conversation tomorrow afternoon, Mr. Mergens, to to finalize this and and get all the language done. It it just hasn't occurred uh prior to today, unfortunately, so.
Yeah, and I I it uh Chris had a, I know he had a trial today and uh I I I appreciate him taking some time to uh to get us the comments this afternoon. And uh it it's been a pleasure working with your staff. You have, you have some really uh great people to work with and um we've got a good, good, good team and a good project going forward. So I appreciate everybody's comments and time tonight.
Is it, is there any other questions or comments uh from council that uh the attorney should consider? If not, uh a motion to table to the next special meeting uh is in order.
Uh, do we?
Motion to table this discussion until next uh scheduled work meeting.
Is is there a second?
Second, but did, was there already a motion on the table for this or not?
We can motion the table, there's some, there is. And so that motion will be reconsidered uh at our next special meeting. The only thing I'll add to that, uh we're assuming we're going to do a special meeting, we haven't called it yet. Um, but we're talking about doing it before the next work meeting, so.
I was going to ask, do we need to schedule a work meeting before we can table it for that meeting?
No, we, motion to table is a motion to table, so. Um, I think we'll deal, we'll deal the timing here a little bit later in the meeting here, so. Uh, Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote on the motion to table?
Councilmember Harrington.
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel.
Hi.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Councilmember Mundel.
Hi.
Mayor Voss.
Hi, that motion passes, so um. Let's depart from our agenda right now and just talk. Before our next work meeting, which is next Monday.
Uh, can you start over there, you went quiet for half of that.
I'm sorry, do you want?
Um, you went quiet again.
Did anyone hear me?
You hear you now.
No, I'm not.
Try it, try it again.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We want to have the special meeting before our work meeting next Monday.
I was thinking six forty-five for six fifty, six forty-five.
Six forty-five. Hey, I'm going to call a special meeting for uh six forty-five on Monday, May third. Um, for a purpose of uh considering the elevage development agreement for phase one. I just need uh a second person to call it meeting.
I'll say, oh, we have a special meeting.
I think everyone did, so, and so we got that set now. Okay, so we have a special meeting, Mike, set up for uh next Monday. Sure, it gives you enough time to get everything resolved by then, so.
It does, thank you, appreciate your time tonight.
All right, thanks, Mike. On to city administrator, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, item seven point O G one, Lever Street easement use. There have recently been concerns over use of a, over an easement on the lots listed as A and B on Lever Street. Which are exhibited in attachment one and three in your packet by adjacent and property owners of interest. The concerns have been centered around the utilization of this thirty-foot easement for vehicular use. This easement is used by some residents in the East Front Boulevard, Lever Street and Katie's Way neighborhood. As a means for access and shortcuts for A T Vs, golf carts, riding lawnmowers, parcel delivery vans and trucks. And personal licensed vehicles as an alternate entrance and a way to travel through this area. The easement is also used by walkers as a means to complete a loop through these neighborhoods and avoid Viking Boulevard as part of their route. Problems have arisen in the past few years with the use of this strip as a dumping ground for yard waste, blockage to prevent motorized vehicle use. And the use of that section of Lever Street that is a private road to access properties that are not part of perpetual easement. These and the questions of the ownership of the easement have led to disputes and confrontation of the adjoining property owners along the season. This section of Lever Street was dedicated by property owners as a public road in nineteen ninety-four. The dedication was accorded to the city but was never accepted as a street in the city's system. Over the years, this easement has been periodically used by residents of one nine three three five, one nine three one five. One nine two six five Lever Street for access to their property. With the development of Katie's Way in two thousand and one, the primary access to the properties listed above has been through the subdivision streets. The nineteen ninety-four easement has not been maintained by the city for vehicular access or for any other purpose. Compounding this matter, G I S directions for emergency service, law enforcement and parcel delivery have directed the use of Lever Street. As a route to access the addresses listed above. The city of East Bethel's fire chief has directed the sheriff's department and other emergency service providers. At access to one nine three three five, one nine three one five and one nine two six five Lever Street. Be by Isetta Street and one hundred and ninety-fourth Avenue. Directions for access to these properties from Google Maps is via one hundred and ninety-fifth Avenue and East Front Boulevard, Lever Street. City staff has contacted Google to redirect access to Lever Street from Isetta Street and one hundred and ninety-fourth Avenue. This request was submitted on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, but it's still under review by Google. City attorney has reviewed the nineteen ninety-four dedication and outlined his opinion of the ownership of the easement. Of the five lots dedicated by the dedication. It appears there is a public road easement over the west thirty feet of the northern two lots. This is A and B in your packet. It does appear that the public has any further as, does not appear the public has any further easements. And to that extent, there are easements that are private for the benefit of individual parcels. In addition, a perpetual exclusive easement for access provided in the nineteen ninety-four deed for lots B and C. Do not restrict the city for any decisions relating to or regulating the public road dedication north of one hundred and ninety-fourth Avenue. To address the conflicts over use of the public portion of this easement and clearly define its permissible forms of access. The following options are offered as a means of resolution for this continuing issue. These are leave the use of the easement as is. Allow restricted vehicular use of the easement as a no maintenance access only to one nine three three five. One nine three one five and one nine two one five Lever Street addresses. Restrict the use of the public portion of the easement between the cul-de-sac on one hundred and ninety-fourth Avenue. And East Front Boulevard to non-motorized vehicular and divesting units only. Or to vacate the public portion of the easement between the cul-de-sac on one hundred and ninety-fourth Avenue and East Front Boulevard, either in total. As a result of this, staff is seeking direction from council as to the preferred option to address this concern.
I want to make a motion to table this. On account of a resident called and said that they wanted to speak on it at the public forum tonight. And were denied that um opportunity to speak. They said that um they were told by whoever they spoke to that um the public forum audio was not. Operational or something to that effect.
Suzanne, uh that resident spoke to me, uh they didn't mention the public forum. They said they would like to listen in on the city council meeting. And I did call them and tell them because we want to keep the number of participants in these meetings low. So it doesn't affect our audio quality. We recommended if they just wanted to listen in, they could do that on YouTube. Uh, I also told them that this was not a public hearing, so we did not entertain comments. And the resident said, okay, and would listen to it on the YouTube version. And I told that person, if they had any questions, they could contact me.
Well, I think they misunderstood.
I'm sorry, Suzanne?
I said, I think that resident misunderstood, um and I apologize for interrupting Shelley.
So you you have a motion to table, are you still keeping that motion, Suzanne?
I'll second it.
Yes, because um I think if the resident speaks, it will. It may or may not um influence our decisions.
It was a resident that wanted to participate in the meeting. And a second resident at one of the other addresses, so two, two residents from two different addresses. Uh, one was going to speak and one wanted to listen in and possibly give uh her feedback, if need be.
Okay, but but do you understand, we're we're not going to have a meeting with the whole neighborhood at city council on us?
No, but there's a fifteen minutes for public comment and that's a public comment.
There's there's public forum, it it, there's public forum we have before every meeting, so.
Right, so they get their fifteen minutes, it doesn't matter if it's one resident, two residents or ten residents.
Okay, so Shelley, did I hear you second the motion to table?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote on the motion to table, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel.
Hi.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Councilmember Mundel.
Hi.
Mayor Voss.
Hi. Right, that motion's tabled, we'll see, we'll see what staff wants to do next, so. Okay, on item two.
If I, if I could add something, if those people want to speak at the public forum, our procedure is. The best thing to do is to email me, but if they call and wish to s- set up an appointment or be scheduled on there. Tell them to specify they want to speak at the public forum, so there won't be any confusion on that.
And ju- and just so we all remember, that public forum is not discussion with council members. It is for them to present the case, so there's, there's not going to be anything resolved in the public forum about this, so. Good, item two.
Uh, on, on this, briefly, since we have Chief Du- Du Charme here.
We tabled the matter.
Okay.
There's no more discussion on it.
I I just thought to food, save time for our chief, okay.
Well, there is a lot of questions to be asked, but it's tabled right now, so.
Okay.
Okay, Jack, item G two.
City of Bethel Haunted Forest Memorandum of Understanding. At the March eighth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting, council discussed means to resolve the issues with the city of Bethel's establishment. Of a Bethel City Park within the city of East Bethel. Proposed memorandum of agreement with the city of Bethel, Bethel Haunted Forest Bike and Walking Trails was proposed. That will address the following main issues with the development of this facility in East Bethel. Those being the removal of the existing Bethel City Park signs and replacement with the Bethel Haunted Forest signs. At the two entrance locations and execution of a liability waiver to protect the city of East Bethel. An agreement to maintain liability insurance on the project and defend and indemnify for claims that arise from the use of the property. And maintenance and operational responsibilities of the facility. The final draft of our memorandum of agreement was approved at this meeting and is exhibited in attachment one. Staff sent the document to the city of Bethel for their prime approval and signature. The city of Bethel returned the M O A with additional revisions on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Their revised document is presented as attachment two in your packet. The city attorney has reviewed their amended M O A as of March twenty-second, two thousand, what, two thousand and one. And offered the following comments. The main items from council and legal perspective are the signage and indemnification, and these resolutions remain in their submission. The city of Bethel's elimination of the transfer of interest provision could allow them the flexibility. For a community group to take lead on the maintenance at some point in this process. This does not seem to be an issue. City of Bethel's only change that may be objectionable is the elimination of the permits provision. However, the city of East Bethel remains the permitting authority regardless of the omissions of this clause in the memorandum of agreement. And the city of East Bethel does not forfeit this authority. Whether this clause remains or is not included in the memorandum of agreement does not exempt the city of Bethel from any city of East Bethel ordinance. As the main objectives of the M O A are essentially unchanged and the city is not forfeiting its permitting authority. Staff recommends approval of the memorandum of agreement with the city of Bethel as exhibited in attachment.
Make a motion to approve the random of, random of understanding with the city of Bethel. As exhibited in attachment two of our packet.
Second, second.
Motion made second, discussion. I'm going to pass this facetiously, but are we sure this is going to be the final version of this agreement?
That was my understanding, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel.
Hi.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Councilmember Mundel.
Hi.
Mayor Voss.
Hi, and that motion passes. Uh, may work meeting agenda?
Just uh one clarification, the agenda I am states city of Bethel Haunted Forest memorandum of understanding. And and the description, it says memorandum of agreement. Does that matter if it uh, one size or not? The agenda I am near the top.
It no, it should, thi- thi- this, the uh, the actual attachment is what governs this and this is the memorandum of agreement.
Okay.
All right, as long as it's approved.
Okay, Jack, work meeting agenda?
Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for May third, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. A request to consider another accounting firms or other firms to perform the city audit proposed at the work meeting on. Or at the, at the next work meeting, at the council meeting on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one. As the city has already entered into a three-year contract with the firm that currently performs this service in twenty twenty. And their performance has met their contractual obligations without issues or concerns in twenty twelve. Staff recommends this discussion be postponed until the fall of twenty twenty-three. Or should other circumstances dictate a reexamination of the contract. Items recommended for council discussion and review could include, but may may not be limited to the following. A joint work meeting with the planning commission to discuss the future phases of the Elevage project. The twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six Parks Capital Improvement Plan. The TIF one five schedule, which is the aggressive hydraulics project. A report on the return to live council meetings regarding the commission's pollings and their opinions on this matter. Uh, and if we have time, a review of where we are with the broadband plan, R F P. That's been discussed with the A E D A in a previous council meeting. Staff recommends that council set the topics listed above for the May third, twenty twenty-one work meeting agenda.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to set the topics listed at the May twenty twenty-one work meeting.
For a second?
I'll second.
Motion made second, discussion.
Um, so the joint work meeting with planning commission, we'd just be discussing it. That would not take part at the next, a joint work meeting would not be part of the next work meeting.
Yeah, the joint work meeting would be the first item on the next work meeting on Monday, May third.
So would we be discussing it, not having it?
We'd be discussing, that's correct, you know, there will not, just be to inform everybody on what the stages of it are. So everybody's up to speed on it, especially the planning commission.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
So now, just to make sure, we're all clarified, we.
Oh, Steve.
We will have the joint meeting.
Breaking up. You all, we're all broken up, Steve, uh, Mayor Voss.
Do you hear me now?
I, yes.
I'll pass, go ahead.
Hey, I just want to thank Jack for clarifying that on the accounting issue that was brought up. I appreciate that.
Is there any other discussion?
I just wanted to say, we were just getting bits and pieces of, of what you were saying.
I want to add that city hall needs a new wifi system, so.
There you go.
Tim had the same problem in the earlier meeting, so I'm serious, we need new wifi in here. Um, is there any other discussion? Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
I have with new wifi.
Councilmember Mondo.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. On the staff report.
Uh, I have, the only thing I have to add is we had a pre-construction meeting with the Forest Lake Contractors, Inc. today in regards to the schedule for the service road. They plan on beginning their work the first week in May. For next Monday, they've already moved a few pieces of equipment in. Uh, their contract project deadline for substantial completion still remains October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one of this year, so. Uh, beginning next week, we'll probably start seeing quite a bit of activity on the east side of Highway sixty-five between one hundred and eighty-seventh Lane and Viking Boulevard. Uh, I want to thank everybody that's been involved in this, this has been a, a long, complicated project and we're kicking it off, and I think it'll be a substantial benefit to the city when completed.
Okay, well, we start planning that two years ago, three?
Actually, it was in twenty seventeen. And if, if you want to go back further, it was twenty fifteen when we first had discussions with MinDOT and we were told that we would be given a million-dollar grant, broken up into two five-hundred-thousand-dollar phases. And we anticipated this project having to be done over at least a three-year period. And at that time, the total project cost was six point three million dollars. Uh, and four years later, we're, we're under that, we're over what the original estimate was. But we're still cheaper than what we looked at doing, at it was in twenty seventeen, so. Uh, sometimes good things happen to those who wait.
Yes, they do.
See, Jack, I have a que- I have a question for you, um, you know, what's, what's the time for me? You know, the golf course said they weren't gonna open that new green till July first, or is that gonna affect their opening day, or?
Yeah, we, we talked to them a little bit about the staging of that portion of the work, and they said it would probably be around June first, we're gonna work in quarantine with them to try to extend that time period out just a little bit longer in that vicinity.
Okay, because that green needs more work, so.
Yeah, anything else, Jack?
That's it.
Okay, on the council reports, uh, Brian.
Uh, we had a Highway sixty-five coalition meeting scheduled for last week, but it was canceled. Um, I'm assuming that they don't have much to talk about right now, and they were working on that promotional video and are waiting to have another meeting until they have something to show on that. Um, I had a EDA meeting last Monday. Uh, big thing on that was reviewing, uh, uh, the internet request for proposals. Uh, we reviewed, uh, uh, nine or ten-page request for proposal, F, RFP, for broadband feasibility in East Bethel. Uh, so some suggestions were made, and it sounds like we will be looking at it at our work meeting itself. So, um, other than that, I don't think there's anything else.
Okay, Suzanne?
Sorry, muting, um, I had a parks meeting and, um, we're, we're still formulating ideas and vendors and, um, not making it too big, that kind of thing. Um, I do have a question regarding the Gail Murphy issue. Um, I'm wondering why she hasn't had a hearing that she requested, and I'm wondering about that warrant, um, what is the goal of the warrant and, um, um, I wrote a note and I can't read my writing, um, shouldn't it go through with? Well, shouldn't she have the hearing before she, uh, any kind of a warrant is issued? I guess those are my two comments regarding that. I don't know if they can be answered tonight or not, but I did want to bring it up.
I can, I can briefly address those, Suzanne, I've had conversations with Ms. Murphy's attorney. We're trying to work for a voluntary, volunteer inspection of the property, uh, to avoid having to do the administrative search warrant. Uh, he has until Wednesday to respond to me, uh, if they will proceed with this request. So we'll know more about that at this time. As far as the hearing goes, uh, Mrs. Murphy, earlier in, in February and to March, I understand was out of the country and was having things may have precluded her even from having a virtual meeting with us. Uh, we'd like to do that inspection first, and then it would be, provide better grounds to have a hearing.
Okay, and what are you looking for in the inspection?
Uh, work done without permits is the primary thing and.
Okay, um, what if there is no work done without permits?
Well, then.
But it needs to be done.
If it needs to be done, remember the house was declared uninhabitable in twenty fifteen. There was nothing done to bring that up to code, at least as far as getting permits to do that. So those are the two things that we're looking at, is make sure that it's structurally, uh, complete and that, though, there was no work done without permits, or if there was work done without permits, there'll have to be inspection of those, and we'll have to.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I've just been kind of lost, and I've been hearing stuff from different people, and I'm like, well, I need to ask this and find out where everything stands and get it clear in my head. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, Shelley.
Well, I'm gonna bring us to a happy note, uh, you guys look on page forty-five, uh, Booster Cart West. We had four different options to look through, and ultimately they chose option two, which I'm very excited for. Um, as you all know, I work for an elementary school and I pretty much, I'm starting to think like an elementary kid, so, uh, knowing what they like to play on and, uh, such forth. Um, this one has a whole bunch of variety, uh, of things for them to do, uh, skills. Um, and then it also had two, uh, sections for, um, handicap accessibility for, uh, playing, and that was basically our whole meeting, was talking about playground equipment. So it's kind of fun.
Did it?
Yep, that's all I got, we did option two, and I'm looking forward to seeing it in felt.
Tim?
Uh, I attended the, the fire department meeting this morning, was in person, the first one. It was medical training refresher. Uh, last Thursday, we had the Anoka County Fire Protection Council meeting. We approved the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two budget. Um, East Bethel's portion will be two point nine four percent, it'll be going up. And, uh, I attended the last Booster Day meeting, and I think we're getting things ironed out, it's gonna be like a five, five-thirty in the afternoon, food, hopefully a band, medallion hunt, um, and fireworks, and that's gonna be about it. That's all I've got.
Okay, and, uh, I do not have anything for this evening, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Uh, motion made in second, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please? You're on mute, Chris.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mondo.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes, our meeting's now adjourned, good night, everyone.